I just, I don't know, maybe we just go down through each section of the budget and talk about it. You know, as we hit that department, that department might come up here. Is that all right?
No.
We see fire have the same salary.
If there's... In terms of, in term, there's been no real most substantial changes of salary. Well, we want to talk about the salary in general because that affects, did part of it, then we kind of cut that part of it down. Can you do that?
Oh, the main part anyway, isn't it?
Like Glenn said, or...
Because five nine dollar raise is what we said, right? And now, uh...
On place and fire and then the...
It's fire for three.
Forty hours, then so much an hour.
Twenty-five cents. Which equals out to five hundred dollars.
So, like the fireman's salaries where it increases, it's twenty thousand, three hundred forty-three dollars and forty-three cents. So, how does that equate to five hundred dollars per person?
Because there's longevity in it.
So, if five hundred dollars... You're giving them a five hundred dollar a piece increase. What is the, I understand there's a, oh, because the en, okay, never mind, I got it. I just, well, it took me a second, I got it, all right. Plus the one percent increase is on the...
So, we, let's just put it this way, police officers and firemen base salary is thirty-five thousand and thirty, with the rate, with the five hundred dollars. That's the base salary.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, I, I got it, no, it just took me a second. That, um...
There's, I want to see, I want to see that more specifically.
No, 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 I, I was just, I know, I was just trying to remember, I, I'm sitting here factoring five hundred in my mind, I'm like, it's not adding up, but I got it.
That triggers out to about this couple of percent. Right, but, um, which... Then we'll look for, then we'll look for it.
You got the five hundred, then you have to, um, get the D.
Yeah, yeah.
And they should have to park for a bit, and add the base salary.
Yeah. Yeah, so...
Keep it on the insurance.
Yeah, the longevity is, that's the one, really, though.
It's depending, yeah, it has...
That's one, really, though. And, uh, I still think that would be many years worth of thing.
And the, and the bad thing about it, uh, a lot of people don't consider that increase in salary, right? But it is.
Sure is, it's new money, more money than they got before. But, I guess my point is, it's one percent a year, so it's two percent more. So, the person who started this last year actually ends up two percent increase. And that's, that's pretty reasonable, just, it just seems that if you have a base and the person's been here fifteen years, it's looking at a base plus sixteen percent. So, that's, that's another whole dimension to it, which...
That four, five, six thousand dollars is offered to decide.
Yeah, that's the question, are we able to get the right kind of people, again, at the price of the pain? I think our wages are looking at the per hour kind of thing, I think is probably close to what can be fairly practical, you know, fifteen, sixteen, something between thirteen. But, um, that's not a bad hourly rate, particularly if you add on the perks along with the longevity, the longevity, then you add on to that, that... Adding on another dollar or two, you know, you get ten years, you're going down to a dollar seventy, seven.
I'm going to do private sector, make it health insurance, I understand that to be soon, I feel it's supposed to help it, but...
That's huge, that's huge. I, you know, I don't know that we can, in terms of overall increase, if things all stay like that, we're not, we're not looking at a huge increase in, uh, overall budget, right?
Like one percent, one, twenty point one five nine five percent.
Yeah, so, in terms of, in terms of what DGL, DGLF might say, we're probably within, we're close to what we ought to expect, wouldn't it?
Oh, yeah, uh, I think if we went three percent, they would prove that, you know, keep taxes down, keep operating expenses down, try and give an increase in the salary, and...
Well...
Without raising taxes again.
Yeah, and, and so, if we're, we're looking at the regular guy, that's the regular employee, and they're, they're taking overtime, too. If you look at the, the salaries and for the elected officials, some department heads, it looks like a lot more, because it's, you know, Gary's, for example, is two per sal. Bridget's, it's like two and a half per sal, I don't know what it is on, exactly on department heads, but, um, in that same neighborhood, probably. But, of course, they don't get longevity, and they don't get overtime, so...
Why does the mayor's secretary's salary go down?
Okay. Change in staff.
And...
I had that same, or I had quite a little increase on a couple, well, flush away the line items, since...
That position's staying like it is.
For now, yeah. That gives them a year to work on that. See, there was, there was one error, but original, bless her heart, she's human.
Yeah, I know, I worked on this all week by myself, I didn't have anybody checking me, that's okay, come flying in at twenty-four, want to make a change.
How that safety board paid, which is the...
Well, because that, utilities added that, you two had discussed it, and I didn't add it to the line, it's because we didn't have, nobody gave me a form one to put it on there.
Utilities are going to incorporate a safety person.
Why don't you give them a little more history on that?
In fact, the insurance, workman's comp.
Workman's comp. Started this, our agent recommended that we start a safety committee, so we started the safety committee, but we didn't, we didn't, we didn't add a rank or any kind of, uh, salary increase or anything. I don't know, I mean, that, for us, it's on the ordinance, it's on twenty-fourth, that's nine, and then on Donna, it's, uh... I don't think I have her highlighted, I think there's one on the... If they were going to do like a five hundred dollar stipend for that, it would be, you're gonna have, you have designated somebody, right now, we don't have one person designated for that, but it would be nine dollars a week if you gave them a five hundred dollar rank increase to say that they would say a safety person in that department.
So, do we have this, do we have the safety coordinator position actually?
It's on the first page of the salary ordinance.
We have, it had been entered.
But it's not, it's not a person, does that make sense?
So, we're setting up a position, we're setting up authority to pay somebody...
If there was someone in that position, but there's not any, it would be...
So, it wouldn't be a new position, it would just be additional duties on top of their current...
Exactly, kind of like on police and fire, how they have little rankings, on, say, little...
Yeah, but those are designated.
Right, well, you would have to designate, you would designate that hurt, you would designate a person if you decide that you want to do it. I only added it because Donna said that, heard the mayor discussed it, but I don't have it added in my appropriation line items, I have to add it in there.
Where is it on the, the utilities?
She highlighted.
Can I see it on that one? On utilities? Is it on utilities also?
Yes.
So, utilities are going to be nine sixty-two, we're going to be nine sixty-two, is that what you're saying?
Well, we, this is for their guy, they're, they're, we have a person for water and wastewater.
We want to have somebody in wastewater, in each department.
She left one person for each.
Yeah, they already have somebody that's doing it, they already have somebody designated in wastewater and wastewater that's doing it. I don't know that they ever got it paid for it, but I think that's what she's putting in there.
We, we have safety people in this department right now.
They had, they asked us to designate somebody in each department, but the, on the city side...
Are we supposed to budget in some compensation for our own person? Because I don't know that any of us were aware we were supposed to do that.
I don't know that we were, I don't know, I don't know.
I mean, we've got somebody doing that for the street department?
No, we've got the safety person, but without that.
They designated somebody that's in there to park, but we have a designated, I don't know.
And we're going to have to take the safety serious and get things done.
We would just have to either...
Do they all come together like once a month and discuss things, or are they just working in their own department?
They're working on their own department, and they're going to come together once a month, it's going to be, uh, manned up. But I like some weekly, uh...
I just don't know how the salary ordinance under the mayor, because I don't even know if they're going to need somebody to do it.
It's on first, it's on second, I don't know, it's on third.
This is new, we've never had safety people, per se.
It's hard to justify a rank increase for water, wastewater, for not going to give it to everybody that's going to have that position.
Nobody can look at Jamie's, doesn't come from the same cause.
I don't know, I have, I have a problem with every time somebody does something a little bit more, a little bit different, they have to get a, we have, we have a, you know, one extra little things here on all these things, and I understand part of it's in order to, because we're asking them to do a special kind of thing, but, on the other hand, if we're looking at all firefighters to be breathing, you know, first responders or breathing air tech people, all our new people are doing that, at some point in time, they kind of just soon say, okay, let's just get the salary where it is, and then, these are the expectations, and you do them.
I agree, unfortunately, it's been like this for forty years.
I know that, I, and I, twenty years ago, I knew that, probably, I complained about it then.
Paid for the job, what it is evaluated at.
I won't, I can't get rid of some days, because it would be a little less figured, I breathe, breath analysis, or whatever.
I think it's been a few years ago.
Extra paid for, and it didn't make any sense to me.
Glenn, weren't we on the council when we get away with the visualizer on the police department?
Yeah, I think...
Because they thought the police can shoot, be able to do that.
Well, what we've got here and here, and, uh, I don't, I don't know that, I think it's a bigger question, it just sounds to me like, because we've got questions from the department heads already, so what about here? And Jamie's saying, well, we're doing a load that do it for all, um, I don't know, build up a big can of worms here, I think.
And in order to, uh, to fix the whole thing, we're going to have to recreate job searchings, I mean, it's not something that we can just say, let's fix it.
No, you can't, no.
Two weeks.
Well, but if you budget it for next year, you've got a few months to get it in place before next year comes, comes into effect. The other side of that, though, is if you're going to put somebody in that position, obviously, you're going to give them some kind of training and education, educate them on what they're looking for, what kind of things they're going through, I mean, so you're going to put them through some OSHA certification training or something.
And no one knows the job better than the person doing it, and what the safety hazards are, sometimes we're not, they don't know their safety hazard, they just continue to do it the same way, but, uh, between what's ongoing within the department, and what you can educate them in by films or seminars or what have you, we've got to move forward with that, you know, something. And right now, we're in a, call it high risk, uh, workman's comp, and not hoping we've had long back steps.
They said that we can implement some different programs that we could reduce our modification rate, that hopefully will get us out of this pool.
Commissioner, on your E M R.
Well, I used to, uh, just one point, some, I don't know.
Just a couple of points above what it was supposed to be.
Yeah, whatever they told us, I forget the number.
Yeah, that one number, yeah.
That one number?
Yeah, it's really not that bad, it's just the...
Well, one's an average, and then if you're over one, then you're worse than average, if you're below one, then you're better than average.
We're worse than average, but we're not, we're not extreme, yeah, it's like one point two.
Unfortunately, they don't look by the amount of back steps.
They're going to look at your worker's comp costs over three years.
They're looking at claims and everything, so we're trying to make some adjustments there, too, how we pay claims.
And getting people back in, working under like duty.
I got a good handle on what you're talking about. I said, I got a good handle, I, that's what I do, so I understand.
Well, I'm, I'm not saying that we, yeah, I'm, I'm supposed to have...
That's just a lot of, there's a lot of different ranks, and, like I said, it's accumulated over time.
And they have nothing that we've really added, in the last six, seven years.
I say, I didn't make any changes since I've been here, those were just really just copy paste the dollars.
You know, additional, additional responsibilities, I think, I think, add...
Not since I've been here.
Add additional dollars, I understand.
Oh, on the...
C D L.
C D L and the mechanics rank, you did do the rank change there, but on the police and fire, I literally just have copied and pasted those last two years, people have to sort them out, it's the same.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not suggesting we change it, I'm just saying, we leave it there, that's fine, I think it's something that does require a lot of discussion, investigation, dialogue with, with people, and I need to be reeducated, too, that maybe it's, there's very good rationale for additional kinds of, of pay on a yearly basis, or stipend, if you will, to encourage or to, because it's necessary. So, I'm not suggesting we rearrange it, I'm just saying that we're adding something here again without, this is the first time I've, we've heard about it, without, um, really having an opportunity to know what the background is, what responsibilities would be, signing off on that, knowing how it's going to actually impact our budget, whatever, and whether it's applicable to, whether it's applicable to everybody or not, um, so, it just, it just seems to...
Well, I, I mean, well, just a quick question, real quick, before you scout on these certs, just something I'm thinking about, on, on the firefighters, we require all new firefighters to be an E M T in, within the first year, correct?
We do, because of the Honda contract.
Right, so we could completely eliminate the first responder certification altogether, right?
We still have first responders that are currently on the department.
Okay, but that's, that's a step below an E M T, we're requiring all new employees to be at least an E M T, I mean, I would think that that's one, we do away with it, and if they want it, then they go and get the E M T certification, and then that way, but then they also have to have the hazmat tech and rescue tech to go out to Honda, right? So, maybe instead of having all three, you bundle it in the one package, and you have one cert, and then if they're not capable going out to Honda, then they don't get any of the pay that would be accumulated with that.
There is a requirement for all new hires to have...
It is a requirement, yeah, all new hires have that, so the only people that are benefiting from the first responder certification, that have been on for a while, that have chosen not to...
Probably the E M T people that are first responders, I think, that have that sort of...
Well, it's a different certification.
It's, it's a different certification, again, the first responder is, it, it's quite a bit less than the class, the reason we have people that are is because prior to the Honda contract, we didn't have a lot of E M Ts, so that was our hope, is that we would at least have them, so that if somebody was having a medical emergency, we respond, we could help.
And, and I, and I understand...
And that's one where slowly, slowly is going away.
Right, and I understand how these came about, in order to incentivize people who've been on the force a long period of time to, to do it, but with the change of job description, you know, maybe there's, maybe we need to look at this again, and I, again, I'm not asking this to make a change tonight, I'm just saying, I think that's something that we should take a look at, and, and analyze carefully, and then make a decision about how it's going to be, if people, plenty of notice, and make the change, and then with next year this time, we change what we're going to do, if we're going to make any change.
Is this something the personnel committee could kind of take home as a project, and then present it to the council?
I don't think there's time to figure it out between now and finally finish this, but I mean, I...
No, I, I was going to say, you'd say going forward, maybe looking into next August.
By next August.
Or by next August, and then implement it then.
Maybe, I don't think there's an issue with putting something together, at least throwing some ideas out there.
We'll be getting safety people together, one way or the other, whether they get paid or not.
Yeah, that's, I don't, I mean, I think water, wastewater are planning on paying their, their person, that we, I mean, we don't have it in the job description anywhere, and we don't have...
Well, yeah, water and wastewater, five hundred annual, here you've got it split, split between, oh, no, it's just per hour, okay.
It should be per week instead of per hour.
But, this one is, is, um, in addition to, this one's new, this one's new, this one's for wastewater, this one would be for...
One person here in the city talking about, or one per, one person?
Safety, we need somebody to cover the street sanitation, and Scott, I'm not sure what your idea is on having safety, because your safety aren't getting oriented the way it is.
We've got somebody assigned to it, because you had requested a rep primary department, you've got a rep.
Stacy, you've got someone appointed, too, don't you?
Yeah.
So, we have people in place, and those are people that took it without any promise of an increase or a certification, so, I'm not paying.
Some question is, do you want to keep it or do you want to...
So, what, what does the job, or what does this person's extra responsibilities have to do with meeting that?
We're going to be incorporating a, uh, they're going to be involved in everything, I mean, I've got, by the experience of G com, of the report, safety inspections, uh, when an accident happens, the accident reports, what the temporary countermeasures are, what permanent countermeasures are, by who, by when, and what caused the accident, you know, so if you make your, make your, uh, corrections, uh, the person will be looking at things that they know is unsafe, that it has to be done, how to do it in a safe manner, and write up the, uh, work standards for that, the safety equipment that needs to be worn, there's a lot to be done.
Well, we're going to maybe get them, like, at least CPRs and other type of, like the...
I think safety person, safety...
One person to at least thirty hours OSHA, which I would think, they're going to, boy, they understand the codes, the regulations, that's a minimum, they're going to be your, your expert for each area.
And Rick Day and I were speaking today, you know, anything that involves one department, as far as safety, they all should be involved, meaning at least the, the team leaders, I think. We don't want people working in a unsafe manner, can't be pretended in that quite often.
I understand that, is that something that supervisors, sir? Responsible for, anyway?
I think they will be involved in it.
Some of the marks.
They have to be.
Right.
Originally, everybody just went in their offices and kind of designated a person, and then just kind of looked at the office in general, and decided whether it felt like we had any issues, whether it be...
If we have sixty days, we can get a job description written out, what responsibilities it will be.
The concern is, maybe it's different, but I don't see how you justify getting water and wastewater, not paying the other person, so you, you gotta, either pay them all, or you don't pay anybody.
So, what do you want to do? That's, that's the question.
If you're going to invest a lot of training into this person...
There's going to be time that they will spend off work, training.
They're going to do training, but then they're also going to be away from the job doing inspections and assessments, so that is going to be the job doing those things, so, but they're going to be paid during this time, so they're still...
I think, I think it's a good investment, I'll put it that way, if, if, we may not even have to invest any money, I think people don't want to see their fellow worker injured, they'd probably do it for nothing. Heard it, and they say, you know, let somebody else do it now.
Well, I mean, if you're going to pay them extra for it, then that's, I don't know that you want to do on that ability, because you're going to put a lot of time and money in the training, if you're going to rotate that person every couple of years, that's okay, too, because you're going to have more people with more knowledge and experience, but you're going to have to reinvest that money and time and training, and so if that's the case, then I would push, do not put the stipend or the additional pay on there, you just say you're going to hold this position for a year or two years, or whatever, if you take it, and then we'll rotate somebody else in, but you're going to have to...
Once, then you lose experience, you can train people, then, and you have the person who's maintained it, just relax, see somebody experienced, say, when that...
Somebody brand new, and then they have to do all that certification.
Well, the other side of that, though, is...
That can still happen, even if you have...
I guess here's my slanted view on it, is if you do it for two years, and then you do it for two years, and I do it for two years, guess what? We've each got a lot, and there's still three of us here, guess how many people have an extended knowledge on safety, and we're working in the plan, so we're going to just more have to see things, more have to find issues and hazards before somebody gets there.
If you can get someone that's interested.
There's good and bad with rotating, I understand that, too.
Mark, I'm going to ask you a question, how many people in your department would really be interested in being a safety, uh, person, hero? What about with pay?
Probably two or three. The, the difference about this compared to like when you talk about like the E M T for fire departments, everybody theoretically in the fire department eventually has to do it, the problem is, you've got a job description that says, I'm a laborer in the street department, okay? This person has to do all this other above and beyond the safety, they're going to say, well, I don't want the position, why do I want to do all this extra work for nothing? You're not requiring my fellow person with the same classification to do this, so why should I do it? In other words, they're going to say, no, I don't want it, that's the problem you run into, nobody wants to do it if all the other people that are being compensated the same thing in the same job classification don't have to do it, I mean...
I just, the other side is that maybe you want it, then maybe you put it on the, the least senior person in the department, the job descriptions all have other duties as, as assigned, right on the bottom? And this is something that's mandated, I, I understand, I'm just saying...
You know yourself, and sometimes people, when they're paid, don't do the job that you like for them to do, but you force a job upon them, that you're not going to pay them for something extra than their fellow worker, they don't want any real dedicated effort into it.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, and what Mark's saying, the question is, if this person's doing safety stuff, as you're, as you're saying, they are not doing the other work, they're, they're doing other things, and we may be needing, create a new, whole new position, sounds to me like, uh, we're going to have to add somebody, because there's going to be work that's not going to be done. We're gonna have to add somebody, cause there's gonna be work that's not gonna be done, because these persons are now involved with safety stuff. So then they're getting paid to do that job, which is the safety thing, as opposed to, yeah, that's why, we don't have a job description, we don't have. Again, you can put it in there, and it doesn't have to be paid unless, unless we get some approval on a, a real job description, and we know what, what is expected and what the differences are. But it's just last minute, that's my, my concern, just last minute.
So would it be treated like some of these other ranks that maybe aren't ever paid out then? If we don't have a job description for it? I mean, we have job descriptions for the other items that are listed as cert pays or. I mean, I don't know whether.
We don't have job, we don't have job descriptions for these other certifications. Do we, Scott, Stacy?
We got, we they got certifications, others, they have to meet certain criteria.
But then that's probably.
But we don't, I don't know what the, I don't know what the expectations are for this, what the criteria would be for this, this function. You're actually asking them to do another function.
You are, you're gonna ask them to do things above and beyond their normal job duties. But at the same time, they're not going to be doing their normal job duties. There, there's gonna be time away from their normal job duties.
To do that, right, to do that function.
So somebody's gonna have to make up that work, and it's, and so that may require overtime, or I don't know what that requires.
Maybe one thing we're missing here, is we're getting caught up in what it's gonna cost the city. And I said, correct me if I'm wrong, today's an important work meeting, this was brought up to save us money in insurance costs. You know, it's my opinion, I think if we can implement this, it may cost us a little bit, but in the end, it's gonna save us. And then, and you know, and another thing too, I think we really want to take the hard, and I'm not saying no, no one's doing this, this isn't a business, but I think we want to take the harder, the safety of our people. As first and foremost.
I, I'm all right, I mean, we've got, we got twenty-five hundred dollars in the budget for, for council reasons. I'm okay, cut that, put five hundred dollars on each of these, there's twenty-five hundred dollars, and we haven't increased the budget to do it. I, just from the humanitarian side of things, I think it's, you're gonna help people, you're gonna provide benefit. Honestly, should've been doing this for a long time.
And I will have the job description prepared for the final.
Or we could have, I mean, that, that, I mean, like you said, these other certifications don't have job descriptions.
But they have certification requirements, which is like the same as job description.
And again, the reason the certification pays were put in what they were, in lieu of increasing salaries to reflect this additional education and stuff, which would then be subject to longevity, pension, taxes and all that, that's how the city decided to do it was, well, we'll give you five hundred dollars for this, or a hundred dollars for this, because it doesn't reflect into your base pay, it does not reflect into your pension, it does not reflect into the longevity and stuff.
Do you have any passion?
I would go along with Jamie, I'll cut it in council pay.
Yeah.
Do a lot for this to happen.
I was gonna suggest, I have to have one anyway. I was thinking, maybe we would just split five hundred.
Five.
Maybe something like that, be that way, so I'm fine with, with that. Let's leave it in there then, and then it, it looks like this city safety coordinator, you've got one person, or you're gonna have?
A mate, right?
You're gonna have one.
Well, if, the wastewater and water utilities, I believe that they're not gonna do it.
They already got it in there, they've already got people that are doing it, but I don't look.
But they only put five hundred dollars in there for one person. I don't know if they're.
No, it's five hundred dollars wastewater, five hundred dollars water, I'm pretty sure.
People then, that's why they got it in there.
They already have someone that's doing it in both departments. They have someone that's doing it in water.
This just says, this implies only one in the organs.
But they don't have a separate, does she have wastewater separated out than her?
It just says utility safety.
Well, I'm gonna guess that she left it out then, because they have, they are have someone that's doing it in the water, and someone that's doing it in wastewater. But they would over any budget for that, so really, the city side of it would only need a budget for.
We're not just leaving it in, though, we're adding it in for fire police.
Fire police, street.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, just so clear, it's everybody across the board.
Right.
Everybody's going together.
Right.
One person.
One per, well, one person from each department.
Per department, right.
And there is to be a job description, an added part of the job description about their responsibility.
So do we have a separate one?
That would be separate by itself, and that's attached to whoever person in addition to their job description.
Instead of having it attached to a job description, have it's in the job description, is that what you get to know?
Yeah. But, and so it's just those three departments.
Well, water and wastewater already have, I mean.
I'm, I'm talking about in the city.
Yeah.
We don't necessarily need one for, for treasurer, for mayor.
We have people in our offices that have discussed it, so.
Or the city engineer.
No, I, I would think police, fire and street department would be good. I want to ask a question.
So what I'd like to do maybe is, you guys were paid with at least a thousand dollars on the salary increases. Plan, I think I touched on, a thousand dollars and two hundred dollars.
Wait, wait a minute, you've got a thousand?
You're saying that the twenty-five hundred from the council increases, you're only gonna use fifteen hundred for fire.
Oh.
Sure, you've got a thousand left, but we're only saying two hundred per council member.
So two hundred.
Another place you can talk about.
So we'll add to the organs, we'll add a safety coordinator to each one, and pull that up to street, police and fire.
And then, if you give me, here, if you give me a couple weeks, we can get together, and start putting together a, a job description for it. I've got a lot of stuff I can, I can help you.
Okay.
And then, I mean, I'd like to.
I'll give the department.
I think.
I'm just hoping you get a role on, cause I'd like to, well, I'd like to.
What do you do?
That's what I do, yeah, I mean, that's.
I'll give the department heads to see what they want, what their priorities are on what.
No, no, no. That would be you. Oh, okay, yeah. Oh, yeah. Safety services?
Anything to do with any parts under man? Chickens?
I have higher skills, so.
You need to know how, like, nap skills.
Nap skills.
Then there's Liam. Nothing here.
He said he can have any skills.
I don't have any skills.
Somehow I don't believe that, but he said he did.
Don't have any skills.
I bet you know how to lift with your, was it, with your legs instead of your back.
I know all those.
See, you know. But you don't necessarily feel like you're the expert.
How about the expert?
See, so you have to lift with your legs, but. Harold's got a picture.
Okay, now we're getting all frag here.
Okay.
Okay, so we've got the salaries taken care of, you have.
Sales, yes.
There in that? So now, we wanna go through the departments as you suggested?
One oh one? Or is yours?
Yeah, well, this is mayor's, mayor's.
There's not much in there.
Made the adjustment in the part-time secretary to increase opportunity for that because.
For part-time? We raised all the part-time up twenty-five cents per hour. It hasn't been raised in years.
So it'd be ten, it was ten dollars, so someone would get ten twenty-five an hour, and if they're considered an experienced part-time person, then they got, they'll get fifty cents basically. So they would get ten fifty an hour, so if we had somebody part-time, it's like our seasonal people, I've been doing, what, eight?
That's right.
It's eight, they'd be eight twenty, eight twenty-five or eight. They got, they, they, they'd be considered experienced part-time, so they get the ten fifty. So, but you've had money left over in those line items each year, so see, you don't necessarily have to put more in when you're returning that money, you don't necessarily, because they're part-time, you don't necessarily have to increase the line item, that they're not spending everything out of the line item. So we were able to give all their raises and not necessarily increase line items. Cause you're returning money over those.
My budget, I really will be less this year than it was last year.
We got machinery equipment.
Looks like they took it off.
Fluctuated it out of services and charges, and they gave you. We're looking at figures. Well, they're looking at, they're looking at, so that they're, for like tab, good request.
But that same mine item is a twenty-five hundred dollar.
See, I fluctuated, you know, put money in equipment, I think you should. And that's what I, and that's what I could do on mine too, I noticed that I actually bumped mine up. I do need some office furniture, but I don't have to, that I can probably switch it in between. I could fluctuate two line items there, and there was a couple people that didn't have anything in the equipment line items. Like I, the mayor didn't have anything, and I didn't have anything, so we can fluctuate those line items, meaning I can just take, swap something off of other services and charges and then bring it down to that work, use that.
So you, you pre- you have the services and charges because you've seen the need to, is that right?
We've got computers, one thing, computers, they're often sheeted, so we're looking at. It's like someone we asked about ten years old.
That's fine, I'm not.
So the machinery and equipment is more office furniture, is that what you're saying?
It's possibly, I know our office has some chairs and some different things. From our whole safety commission, we have our office, we've talked about maybe doing some different ones, chairs and stuff.
So you, okay. So I'd ask the question, so you're looking at for about four thousand dollars more for services and charges and machinery equipment compared to last year? Is that what?
That's what it looks like, but I don't, I think that's, I can, I, I could actually just swap the amount. And not, I would actually have a decrease if I would, were to just take something off the eleven five and move it down to the machinery and equipment. I would actually be reducing.
So you're gonna cut to twenty-five hundred?
Well, how about if I cut the fifteen hundred?
Okay.
Off of other services and charges, and make, take that back to ten, and leave something in equipment.
So be there twenty-five.
Or twenty-five hundred, that's fine, leave the twenty-five, and then that puts your account, well, if you, if you take fifteen hundred off, you dropped your.
So you're actually.
Budget by five hundred and thirty dollars.
Well, and if you, F in the top, that's salaries, that's longevity. I have a pretty good side skill on longevity savings, so. Could take that back to ten. From two, twenty fourteen, obviously reduce that.
If you make it, well, what, if you make it ten five, you still say, you still drop thirty dollars. If she makes that ten five for the three thirty-nine, other services and charges, instead of making eleven five, we get ten five, the overall account will still be minus thirty dollars, not quite thirty dollars, twenty-nine dollars and fifteen cents.
Fifteen cents.
If we change line three thirty-nine, instead of eleven five, just make it ten five, ten five. The count, the total account is still a negative twenty-nine fifteen, so it's dropped twenty-nine dollars and fifteen cents.
As opposed to an.
And where's the machinery, what's the machinery?
Twenty-five.
It's gonna stay the same.
And the other one's ten five?
Ten five.
And so, where have you else, have you redressed anything?
No.
We're not.
We're just dropping the three thirty-nine by a thousand dollars.
Which would make the total.
Be nine five instead of ten five?
No, no, it'd be. The two fifteen requested, instead of the eleven five, it'd be ten five.
So it'd be five hundred dollars increase.
Wait a minute, I'm still, I'm not following.
Three thirty-nine.
Three three-nine, you get ten thousand this year.
That was so fourteen, fifteen, was it eleven five? We're changing that to ten five.
Oh, okay, there, I'd look at the book. I've got a, I've got a question on, this affects multiple departments, because it's, they're all we want. What is the cell phone policy again?
Uh, ten dollars a week.
For?
Department heads and people that we need to have.
Designated in the office that will take cell phone calls, if they need to be taking cell phone calls. Anywhere from, what, wastewater to?
Yeah, I mean, there's critical people. My, my question is, is your two assistants also?
I didn't get, but I don't know that they needed, but they, they've been given to it in the past, so I just continued it on. I didn't take it away from them, how about that?
I don't, I don't see that as a, I mean, how many times, I mean, they're clerical. I understand the department head, I understand critical laborers, that, the people that come, and it's only a thousand dollars, I understand that. So maybe it's goodwill, I don't know, but that just seems like, that didn't seem like it was in keeping with the other areas that have, you know, and there's a number of these, you know, they've got, maybe it's rounded off, but two point five people, it'd be five hundred, five hundred and twenty dollars. Other places, it's what you expect, but I don't, I'm just.
The mayor's assistant doesn't, what about the, the assistant, the engineer's office? So, that position has.
The engineer, the engineer's office has a, well, it's got two people in there, it's got enough for two people. Cell phones, no, that's, that's an engineer, has, just, well, it's probably one, but it's got six hundred dollars in it, so it's probably rounded it off, I guess.
So you, well, to take. Yeah, it's fifty, it's ten, I'll personally.
Five twenty again.
Yeah, five twenty.
And they definitely take, have they take taxes out?
Cause it actually gets added to your total.
Yeah, it's on the salary side of it, it's not, it's just a check. Yeah, it's not just a check, it's part of.
I know, it, it comes, it, it goes into the whole social security, same as asserts do on the rest, it doesn't affect, in terms of per, it might affect your, your pension there, I don't know. Doesn't, I guess in the case of a fireman and policeman, I don't know about the ordinary other people of per.
So do you want to go back through and designate who gets?
Well, I thought we, I thought we were gonna let it up to department heads.
Who needs it.
And who needs it, and I can, I get, I'm being devil's advocate here, and just asking, raising a question, if there's a thousand dollars, if we're looking for a thousand dollars to pay for coordinators for safety, then there is.
So, I mean, the question is, do you feel that they need it, if they do, if you feel the need at the.
Well, it was kind of inherited, I mean, I didn't.
You didn't make it up.
But the question is, do you, or is it necessary for them to do their job, or do you?
I wouldn't say it's necessary for them to do their job. They, they have made their numbers available to department heads for questions. I mean, you know, I know years ago, even on the county side, it kind of got into that whole, you know, do you provide a cell phone, do you use a personal cell phone? I think this probably where that stipend came from, in the beginning of it, but, you know, I, I mean, I, like you said, it is clerical, so I don't know.
Do they do it during the, do they, department heads are calling at night, or weekends?
I can't say that that's all the time, I would say it's probably been more from a personnel standpoint, if there was, I don't know.
Injury after, injury after hours, something where we would need to have.
You know, maybe a work.
The HR person schedule, possibly a. The HR person's schedule, uh, possibly a, a drug screen or something for an accident after hours, something to that...
And that has to be done through this office?
Typically, we are...
Typically, they're the ones that schedule it all then, so. So, in the past, those were times that, that we would, we would utilize in cell phones.
They should have, I don't believe that that's the case, if it's after hours, that I would believe it, should be a personal cellphone, myself.
But then, I want to say, I mean, we can, I mean, I could even adjust that on something else, if that's what, I mean, if you want to take the other...
No, I'm, I'm just asking a question.
But if we wanna make a change there, then, I mean, we, and I think it's in the salary, it just says what the stipend is, it just doesn't, doesn't designate who they are.
Right.
So we could, like I said, I can make a change if we need to, I mean, I don't necessarily want to take it away from somebody if it's necessary.
That's only one, then.
I'm good with it.
No, Mark, I think it's part of the common name, or...
Yeah.
My company is forty dollars, and I'm really give you a cellphone, and pay the whole thing, if you use your own, I give you forty dollars.
Tax free.
Low bar, so we change salary in the city council?
We're about to...
So we're gonna take that back to, what, to ten ninety?
Thirty-three five, we added, we added a thousand, not the...
We're increasing it at that.
We're increasing a thousand. Thirty-three five.